So, the traffic impact study is paid by the applicant, who are their retained consultant. That traffic impact study was also sent to the New York State DOT for their review. It was sent to this village board, our planning board, for their review. It was also sent to the Orange County Department of Planning for their review. So, two outside independent agencies reviewed this, as well as report.
So, was anybody that did the study live in the village? And what times did they do this traffic study? And is there gonna be a left-hand, no left-hand turn signal?
Those, those times are denoted in the report. I encourage you to formally take a look at it, but usually peak hours are sometimes early in the morning between like seven and nine. And usually in the afternoon between five and seven.
So, there will be a no left-hand turn signal?
We're still waiting for the DOT to finalize what their review is. But right now, it seems like they may be heading down.
Okay, second question to you. I'm a retired electrician, and my concern is emergency service people, the first responders that show up to the next flood that's eventually gonna happen, and no matter what easement you make and how you build this thing, that water's coming to ninety-four, guaranteed it. Where is the electrical service being put on this property? On the ground floor? On the second floor? Is it underground? Is it overhead?
It's, I think it's a requirement, pretty much, to have underground electric service nowadays. If you provide, that's what our intention is.
Okay, so where's the main panel? Where is it located?
That's a part of developing architectural plans for a building permit. We're, we're so far away from that stage, it's not even funny. But we certainly aren't.
No, it's not funny.
Okay? Yeah, we're just far away from that stage at this point. So, you have to understand that our electrical panel would be at a minimum on the first floor. The first floor is six feet above, six point three feet above. Six point three feet above the flood elevator, the hundred-year flood elevation, so an electrical panel's never gonna be impacted by this project.
Okay, also, the last storm, even past two storms, FEMA recommended that nothing should be built in the future on this side of the Mudna Creek on ninety-four. Has FEMA even been notified that we've, that you guys wanna build on that side?
I defer actually to the village to respond on that, but.
FEMA does not typically do a project-specific review. They have not been noticed by, the village does have a floodplain manager. The application for any development in a floodplain has to go through them, and they are responsible for enforcing the FEMA regulations. The plan as presented so far does meet the requirements of the FEMA guidelines.
Okay, my next question, real quick, is you as a planning board, who live in this village, your decisions could, could affect your home's present and future. And you're telling me that by you approving this project sets, sets a precedent for moving forward, that this is gonna look like Monroe and Chester now, which has multi-floor apartments going from Surrey Road all the way, all the way to, to Seventeen Avenue. So, just take into account where your decision comes at the end of the day here. It just doesn't affect East sixty-one Main Street. That's gonna affect the future of this village. Okay, I got one more. Second. Okay, why do we have to hide behind an LLC? Who really is the LLC here? I mean, it's, it's the elephant in the room. Everyone knows who it is. Why do we have to hide who owns this? It's, it's like disgusting, you know? I agree with this gentleman over here. We have a quaint village here. It shouldn't go into a, a city life where they're gonna stop building elevators in this area soon. You know, it's disgusting, it's gotta stop. That's it.
Thank you.
That's it for the list, if anybody else.
Sure, so Tom Davenko said in April court, I think the, the highlights out of all of this list has to do with the traffic study once again, because, again, just to repeat it, that it's from twenty-two, it's old, and we don't know the times that the study was actually completed. Because if they were to sit in the traffic, it took me today approximately twenty minutes from T and M Deli to get to the high school. So, if they're really paying attention to this, and not whitewashing it to be in the favor of the applicant, then, my name's George. Your comment on the six point three feet above three oh seven, so what does the three oh seven represent in a number?
That's the actual elevation of the one-hundred-year flood.
Okay, three oh seven is at what height though, at that point? Is that six point three feet? Or is that four feet, and then we're adding six-three to it?
So, three oh seven is what we call a base flood elevation. So, if there's nothing built in that harbor, and you look at just topographic lines, the floodwaters will come up to three oh seven. That does not include anything with our project. That's just the existing topographic lines.
Okay.
We're placing fill on the site to come six point three feet above elevation three oh seven. We only need to be two feet above three oh seven.
So, three oh seven would be ground level at this moment?
Would, no, ground level right now on that site's about three-ten point, I gotta look at the site plan, that, three-ten and change.
But varies.
Well, but the first floor elevation.
Three oh seven, Tom, it's the elevation that the floodwaters get to during a hundred-year flood. Ground surface is here, and based on FEMA's studies, they've shown that we get to three oh seven. And that's a, a level water surface. So, at parts of the property, there is no flooding based on the existing elevations. At other parts of the property, there's up to ten feet of flooding.
Okay, so if you get to the floodplain, yes, you would run into that issue.
Correct.
But your statement also said that that area doesn't get flooded. So, the question is, then why are we raising it six point three feet? And if you look at the flood pictures that were shown time and time again from twenty-eleven, that whole property was flooded right to the street. So, again, whatever data you guys think you're looking at, it isn't the correct stuff at the end of the day. So, if we're sitting there looking at now the bottom floor of a two-story building, six and a half, six point three feet higher, as I'm walking down sidewalk, um, anybody been to New Orleans? Anybody walk the street and happen to look up and see a water line?
Yep.
So, what I feel like I'm gonna be walking by that property is a fishbowl. And to have that added, then the two stories added on top, looking at that building, it's gonna be almost, I'll say, two more stories above any house that's sitting there. That needs to be addressed. Because if we don't flood, put it on the ground. If we do flood, then you really gotta come up with a different solution. Because what you're doing right now is driving the property values into the toilet.
Yep.
That's what's gonna happen here, and it's already happening. So, this magic of six point three and then two floors on top doesn't, doesn't work. The stormwater pollution plan, again, you're gonna bury large tanks under, underground. When that water comes in, that water at that point is gonna, those tanks will be full, and so will the land that's, that sits on it. Because the water, if you've been in this village during that particular storm and others, like in ninety-seven, the water pressure coming up from the Mudna took the water drains and the sewer drains and put water right out, right out of the storm drain covers. I'm against three A as far as dedication. That's an easy way out for the applicant. All we're doing there is giving us what I would believe to be floodplain property. Thanks, but no thanks. Um, we have enough of that, we want the thanks as we are in the village at this point in time. Um, an easement to it, I'm not sure if that's, you wanna put it there, but I don't think that's part of giving you all this leeway to basically bypass the procedures and the variances and things you need to do. And that's my recommendation to the planning board. Just reviewing if I made any quick notes I do as we're talking. I am concerned about, it might look minor, but any historic resources for preservation, anything that's in that house, around that house, really needs to be identified and obviously safe if this thing continues to march down the road. But I'm totally against it, and I think everybody in this room, for the last year and a half coming here, has voiced our concerns, are just tense for this project, and nice project for put at someplace else.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment this evening?
Yes, Graham Power. Okay, so.
Please stand.
Ten-decker Drive.
Please stand.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so this, I think, might have been caught up, but, you know, we have volunteer fire here, volunteer ambulance, they handle an awful lot of stuff. I remember in Irene, they rescued several people under the trees going down below, across from the batting cages, across the river there. They were rescuing people, so I don't think we have the volunteer people here to help twenty-eight apartments over there, and sixty or seventy people that'll be in there, and the cars in there, and delivering the cars out if the flood remains there for a day or two, and, and all that problem. It's just totally impractical, impractical, okay, to have a valid response for this one. Other parts of the village are gonna be needing responses too. That's what I feel.
Thank you. I see another couple of hands. You went already, but we'll get back to you, but my buddy in the back.
David Dunn, One Lake Drive, David Dunn Senior. One Lake Drive, Washington Drive. On the water situation, we've had restrictions on water here in the summer. This year, we had no snowpack, so this summer is gonna be hard on the wells. There's no two ways about it. All the rain coming down does nothing. Goes down your blacktop into the stream, and it's out in the river, out in the ocean already. So, I think you better take a good look at the water situation, because that's one of our problems.
Thank you.
Patrice Gessner of Seven Puritan. A couple of my topics have already been addressed. Um, I'm a nature girl, and I know that, you know, there's an issue with the, the nature that's on that property right now. I'm concerned about the number of trees that you're gonna knock down. I'm concerned about the more trees or brush that you're gonna knock down to build these buildings, to put in another additional twenty-five apartment spaces. Again, exiting, no left turn. If we can't do a left turn, have you notified the people that, on the side streets, that, how they're going to be impacted? All those people who live on those side streets to come out and around, to come out to a life are gonna be affected. Let's see, water, I can, I think I can quote you, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, six thousand gallons a day. Is that correct?
Six thousand eighty, to be exact, yes.
Okay. Multiply that times three hundred and sixty-five days is two million one hundred and ninety thousand gallons a year. Down the street, we just had, in South Blooming Grove, a store that was on fire and had to take in how many fire engines, how many stations to put out a fire because there wasn't enough water, they needed to bring in tankers.
That's right.
Is that what's gonna happen to this community?
Good point.
Dedication of land park to the town? No, thank you. It's useless land, and I say that we go for, you need to apply for the high density, because I'm not for it. Can you, I'm, I'm just being clear. So, I was under the impression that, like, you guys, I thought were dedicating that peep, that landlocked parcel to the village prior to a scene in here, and now using it as a bargaining tool to avoid a variance. That had always been, I thought, part of the.
They had originally offered to put a conservation easement on the rear parcel, because there was concern that they would come back at some point in the future to ask for building permits to build in the rear. So, they offered to put on a conservation easement, which would prevent them from ever doing that. The county planning department wrote to the planning board and asked them to ask the applicant to dedicate. The applicant has never offered a dedication. The board has never asked for it. That is solely a common, comment from the county planning department. So, it's being discussed now, because the county has written that as questionably a requirement for the project, for that rear parcel to be dedicated. But that did not come from either the applicant or the planning board.
Because I hope this board is not considering that. Don't you not be an option.
Not considering what?
The project.
Actually, no, I have to answer that. I just have to answer that. The board has to consider the project by law. They have to follow the codes and the law. So, when you tell us that we shouldn't consider it, that's wrong. We have to, and this applicant, as any other applicant, has to be heard and given their fair share by the law. Thank you.
Bob, that was not, those were not my words.
The dedication has to be considered by the board. Otherwise, the board will then be violating law in ignoring the county.
So, let me clarify. It's not the dedication, it's the tree for getting a landlocked parcel for them to not have, need a variance for that density. That is what I'm, I'm.
That's an unrelated question.
But that is what it's.
No, 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 Ms. Jackman, so, and let me, and let me preface this by saying, there was discussion about a dedication before this board, early along the process, but that was for the parcel of the, of the park in the front of the building. Nothing in the back. The back had always been, hold on, I'm gonna, and I'm happy to discuss with you all who also wanted to, Ms. Jackman, so if you want. Because this is an important point, right?
Yep.
The back has always been put up for discussion as a conservation easement, meaning that they would be giving to the village no, no further build-out rights. No, no, like, permanent open space back there.
Landlocked.
The landlocked parcel.
Correct.
What they're asking for as part of their application before this board is a lot line revision, lot line removal. We call it a subdivision, because there's no separate lot line code provisions in the Village of Washingtonville Code, so it's considered a subdivision. They are asking to remove that line, and by removing that line, it allows for a, a total of fourteen residential units on that parcel. Does that make sense?
Right, but I'm looking at the language in K and N, which is what's concerning to me. They're talking about the village receiving the dedication of that parcel, the landlocked parcel.
They're asking us for, that's what they're doing.
In return for the waiver.
No, no, no.
They're saying that if we should, if the village does want it, then the village also has to acknowledge that there would be a waiver that would be needed to grant to the applicant, as, because we wouldn't have enough area to get the density we currently have when we're not dedicating it. I mean, that's a simple.
They're saying.
The letter actually says, "We advise that the village allow the proposed development to the density, but to allow for a lot line change so that a portion of the south parcel located to the south of Mudna Creek could be offered to the village to be aided to its park immediately west of the project site."
So, so just to be clear, if the village were to not accept a dedication, that does not mean that they automatically will not get the developmental density. They are, they are two separate things.
So, this sentence here where it says that we wish to avoid the need for a density waiver by the planning board, or the need to seek an additional variance?
Right, because if they lost the property, if they didn't have the second lot, then their total lot area would not be enough to justify fourteen units.
Correct.
So, the county is saying, don't, when they, if they offer this for dedication, don't take it away from them in determining their density.
So, it's not, it's not avoiding that variance density?
It is not.
Because this, then this is variance.
I, I understand how you're interpreting that, but that's.
That is exactly how it is.
What the, what they're intending to say is, don't, don't use that dedication as a means to reduce the density.
I mean, this is coming from the UTR, from your attorney.
No, this is coming from the Orange County planning board.
She's reading the applicant's reply.
That's the, that's the Orange County.
That's how, yeah, that's how we reply.
Do you have the copy of the, the letter from the actual planning department that they were responding to?
Look at the letterhead, Ms. Jackman, so I can.
This is what I'm referring to.
Look at the letterhead.
Well, this is the letter from the county. This is where I'm reading.
This letter.
Yes, that is the, this is the letter that they're responding to, from Orange County.
This letter is not from me. This letter's from the applicant. It was addressed to me. No, it was addressed to me. I did not write.
No, I'm.
Yeah.
I'm saying up here.
This.
But our, not me.
This is a comment from the county, and this was written in response to this letter.
So, are we, are you looking, are they looking for a negative declaration? Is this going to vote tonight?
Or, hold on, we're, let the board just process the information, we're gonna discuss our next steps. Are you done with your public question?
Well, that was one of them.
Let's hear, let's hear everything, and then we're gonna discuss our next step.
To seek the negative declaration tonight.
I don't, I don't think we're in a position to, we don't have the full form. We have three out of five.
Is that correct?
That's, that's, I have to speak to my board about a, a step in the process that we need to do. So, if you wanna be done, then I can take over.
Well, that was one of the comments. The other was that, this has been in the works since twenty-eighteen, we have three brand-new planning board members on this board, and I'm just urging you, if you feel that you have the information that you need, or, you know, you guys started in October, you know, we've been doing this publicly for almost a year now. There's so much room. I hope you have what you need to make an educated, clear decision if you need to vote. And if you don't, then don't vote. Thank you.
Does anybody else have a comment, question?
No. Thank you.
Art Jeffries, one forty-nine East Main Street. I was the water operator here for thirty-one years. And I really think that they have to look at the water situation. Water situation right now, you're fine. The water study should be done in the summertime, not now. And you do have a big problem here, because you had two executive years with no snow. It takes a year from each snowstorm to get down into your wells. So, you really wanna look at, right now, the water operator says we have plenty of water. You really wanna look at it really close, because I've been retired for twelve years, and this village has not done any work on trying to get more water to, for this situation. And you also added more houses to, to the water system that previous boards exempt one of their people to do the wells. So, you really should be looking at it. I mean, a lot closer. Yeah, you only see six thousand gallons per unit for a whole complex. You wanna look at something else there, too. You're not looking at your sprinkler system, that you want a nice green lawn, you're not looking at that. You're not looking at, you're putting brand-new shrubs in, you're not looking at to keep the water going, to keep these shrubs green. No one's looking at it. And you really should. It's just my opinion. I've been through many a floods in this village, too. And I can tell you, it gets crazy here. And a lot of people don't realize is that due to the fact that you have all brand-new developments that were built twenty years ago outside the village. Now, all that water is flowing towards your village. It's flowing into Mudna Creek, Town Hill. So, it's a clean drive. It all comes to the village. And you really gotta look at it. Yeah, they put all these detention ponds in, but sometimes that don't help. So, it's something that you really wanna look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last call for, last call for public comment? Anyone else?
Thank you for not sticking to the three minutes. I appreciate it.
I would like to thank everyone for their comments, and for everybody's demeanor tonight was excellent. Thank you. How can I see a hand?
Hi, Jill Schenzel, one thirty-five Matt Mall Road. Donna, hi. I heard you asked to continue keeping the, the comment process open to another meeting, and I'm just wondering if that's gonna happen.
Keep the public hearing open.
Yeah. Yes? Oh, okay.
Can you please spell your last name?
S C H E N S U F.
Anyone else like to speak, question, comment?
Okay, thank, thank you everyone for your comments this evening.
Okay, so, this is where I'm at. I'm sitting here reviewing, again, the county's comments, and we have this project listed as an unlisted coordinated review under SECR, and I'm, I'm had, you know, to, I wanna have this discussion with the applicants, attorneys, and engineers. Based upon the limits of disturbance, and because of now the county's comments that they have officially acquired that back portion as county's parkland, I think that bumps us up to a type-one action, because if the limits of disturbance go over the twenty-five percent threshold of the ten acres, so it's two point five acres, which is fine, because we have been doing a coordinated review this entire time anyway. But I believe, what I would suggest, is we amend our SECR to list it as a type-one and recirculate the notice of intent just to adjust it as a type-one. We've already done a notice of intent, we've, we've, this board has done, you know, we, we had to do it for me in review. But I think to adjust the record, we would have to, I, I think that, that would be the way that I would propose it, and I'm, and I'm happy to have a discussion on that. Right? I'm correct, the limits of disturbance are over two and a half acres?
I don't think so. What's the, what's, what's the parcel? John, you have the maps over.
I, your front parcel is two point three. You're disturbing eighty-five percent of that per plan, and now you're adding twenty-five more parking lots.
Yeah, but what triggered it in my head was, was the, was the additional parking.
But I don't encroach onto the, some of the parcel that's connected to Mudna, right?
It doesn't, it doesn't, it, it, the way, the type-one section reads, um, any unlisted action that exceeds twenty-five percent of any threshold in this section are currently wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any publicly owned or operated parkland or rec area designated open space. So, because of that, it is an unlisted action, and twenty-five percent of six-one, a project or action that involves a physical alteration of ten acres, the twenty-five percent threshold being the two point five.
But we can't be disturbing two point five acres if the parcel's two point three acres.
That's my question for the engineers.
And I think my, my, my limits of disturbance are actually on the plan, and I know.
Well, your limits of disturbance are on the plan, but we, we know you're adding a parking.
We're adding parking.
Um, can I just take a look at the?
Yeah, please.
Can you explain the type-one, what's the next, what you're talking about?
We're talk, we're talking about how under the state Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, there are different. there are different designations per statute, how a project is to be evaluated under that. So there's a type 1, a type 2, and unlisted.
You want to go to type 1, what was it before? It was, you have, this board hasn't listed as unlisted action.
I know for a fact.
Unlisted.
Yeah, no, it goes to the actual center of the road, which is even more concerning. I'm not even close to 2.5 acres.
It might be 2.2, or closer to even...
With the additional parking?
Absolutely.
I, I just, obviously, I'm, I'm just flagging it as if your plans come back with the, with the parking lot cause, like, if you're, if you, if you show above that threshold any future site plans, we're going to have to amend that SECR.
I'm pretty confident, because the whole parcel's 2.3 acres. That's including dedic, that including a dedication to Center Line Road. So nothing I'm proposing in the future, this grading plan's accurate.
Wait, including, including up to Center Line?
The entire parcel to Center Line Road is 2.3. The only approach is to, beyond the 2.3.
I just want, I can mess with it up as a...
I think they're close, but just below.
If you're, if you're below, the scene says that it's not a type 1, but...
We are definitely below.
Okay. Then it's continued...
I'm very, I'm very confident.
Okay, I'm just flagging it as, as, as something I... I'm just flagging it as something I, I, I found potentially, okay. So the applicant's site plant engineer and our engineer will confirm. Obviously, if in the future the plans alter, then that threshold will be amended. But what they're saying is that that second parcel, the entire parcel is 2.3 acres, and that second parcel will not be touched except for two pipes going in the grab. So it wouldn't, they're close to the disturbance limit, but they're not fully there. I leave that to, to engineering. So your options are, you've heard the public, again, we need to have clarifying, we need to clarify from the county whether or not that comment is binding. Your options tonight are, if you feel you can, you, you've conducted your fact finding and you are comfortable closing the public hearing. We have, we have had this open for quite some time, but that's a decision of the board. So you can either adjourn it an additional time and hear everybody again and get that one clarifying from the comment, clarifying comment from the county. As far as my notes show, that's the only thing I have outstanding. Everything else has been addressed.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Can the public hearing, can we leave it open for written comments and close for oral comments? Or it has to be open or closed?
No, you can always leave it open for additional written comments. As the applicant's engineer pointed that the, are you asking that it remain open?
No, I think we're, I just don't think we're in a position tonight to seek a, a secret neg dex simply because we prefer it.
No, I haven't prepared anything. But my, my board has not made any determination, and I have not prepared any, anything in that regard, so I would not, I, the only thing, your option tonight, you could close the public hearing and then direct me to draft a secret determination for this board's consideration.
I'd just like to...
Okay.
I'd like to confirm.
You have to discuss in public, Bob.
Okay.
If you do leave it open for written comment, it's fairly normal to do so.
Yeah.
For somebody that may not have been able to come tonight, but usually you set a fixed time period, either 15 or 30 days.
Okay, leaving it open for oral and written, or just...
Basically, the question is, do you want to hear everybody presumably one more time if we get that clarifying comment from the county one more time in person? Or do you want to close the oral portion of the, of the public comment period and allow for written comment only up to a day or two?
Okay, I, I really didn't feel as though water was addressed completely. That's just me, but some new information came up with the folks who came in here this evening, so I am concerned about just leaving it, closing it and then just leaving it open to written commentary. I would prefer to leave it open.
Which, just so the applicant can adequately respond, which information are you determining to be new?
Well, I was, yeah, I was concerned about the, what you had just brought up, even though we addressed it just now. I was concerned about the height of the structure. I was concerned about the water and the exact numbers of how the water, how it will affect the village, which I still haven't gotten. I've just gotten, well, I talked to somebody. They said it's okay. That's not okay for me.
You don't have to make that decision now. No. No, the only decision you have to make is whether you're going to close it down or you're going to adjourn it to an additional meeting.
Okay.
So... So for the public, until 11:00 at 7 p.m. or as soon as thereafter, as it may be heard.
After we...
Make a motion to adjourn.
We need to ask the applicant if he's okay with it.
Are you available at 11:00?
Guess who will be? All right, so now we need a motion to adjourn the open public hearing to the 11th.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
61 East Main Street Public Hearing.
61 Main Street Public Hearing.
Until the 11th of April.
7 p.m. Village Hall.
All right, vote please.
Aye.
All right. All right, so the meeting, the public hearing is going to be adjourned until the 11th of April at the Village Hall, 7 p.m. I encourage as many people as possible to give us written questions, please. It's much easier for us to review them, get answers, and ask the applicant and bits of information back to you if we have something to write.
Okay.
And now we just need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Good evening.